All right, so welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, Select Board here in person, members of the public, as we see some out there right now are attending in person, others may participate remotely, as we always coach people, you can go to the town website, go to the meeting calendar, click on the Zoom link, everything is there. If you don't have access to a computer and you want to dial in from your phone, we do have a conference line, dial in number available, and then, as always, the packet with the meeting materials is available to the general public to click on, so you can kind of follow what we're discussing here this evening. This meeting is being recorded, and at this point, I would like to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country. Thank you. All right, can we jump right into a public hearing, or do we need to wait officially until 6:15? All right, so can we jump ahead and do some discussion? All right.
I would not do that because then you won't be able to. I would do a couple easier.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to do number five on the action items, which is accept the resignation of Kirsten Pollard from the Conservation Commission. I read her letter, I know she's got a lot in her plate, definitely appreciate everything that she's done for the Conservation Commission. I'm sorry to see her go, but I know she's got a lot going on.
I concur with all that, and I'd point out a lot of the things she's got going on probably are also having to do with the town or through Medfield Foundation, so it's not even like she's leaving Town Service, she's just scaling back. Ready for motion?
Yes.
I move that we accept the resignation of Kirsten Pollard from the Conservation Commission.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The other one will do number eight, if that works, because that's a rather quick one. Dana Henthorn, Building Commissioner, requests a vote to appoint Daniel Warner as alternate wiring inspector. Ready if you're ready.
I move that we appoint Daniel Warner as alternate wiring inspector.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see if we get some of the quick ones.
What did the consent gen?
Yes, so just jump into that. All right, the consent agenda, we'll ramble through those. Vote to approve the request for the 10th Annual Hunter's Run 5K and 1 Mile Fun Run to take place on April 6, 2025. Vote to approve the request for sandwich board signs to be placed at the intersection of North Street and Route 109, and the intersection of South Street and Route 27 from December 3, 2024 to December 8, 2024, to advertise the Memo Holiday Parade and Lights and Joy to the World performance. And vote to approve the request for sandwich board signs to be placed at the intersection of North Street and Route 109, the intersection of South Street and Route 27, and at the transfer station from December 3, 2024 to December 17, 2024, to advertise the first night rail trail walk to take place on December 31, 2024.
I move that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right, done with that. I think we have two minutes to spare. Is there one we think we can do in two minutes, or? I think there's one we could do, but I don't want to... Can we do number four, or is there going to be more discussion, do you think, even though we've already approved it?
You already approved it. Good.
Okay, so we'll do number four, which is we'll vote to approve the memorandum of agreement for July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028, with the Medfield Permanent Firefighters Association Local 4478, IAFF and AFL-CIO.
Ready? I move that we approve the memorandum of agreement for July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028, with the Medfield Permanent Firefighters Association Local 4478, IAFF, AFL-CIO.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's awesome.
Nice to get contracts done ahead of time.
Yes.
Well ahead of time.
That was good. All right, so we are inching towards, what's my time check here? 6:14. So we will be opening the public hearing for the tax classification hearing. Is there a following number?
Yes.
Okay, get that ready to go. Let's see if there's anybody, anybody remote participating in that, or is everybody here? And Mark, we don't need to make any reference to the executive session until the end, correct?
All right.
I mean, there is a legal notice right in front of you. That one has to be read out loud.
Okay, can I do that now?
At the beginning of the public hearing, yes.
We declare the public hearing open for us and then read.
All right, I declare a public hearing open?
You could just note that it was published, wherever it was published, I assume the Hometown Weekly.
Hometown Weekly, was it on the website as well? Okay. Legal Notice, Town of Medfield, Public Hearing, Attention Taxpayers. The Medfield Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 3, 2024, at 6:15 in the Channery Meeting Building, second floor, Town Hall, 459 Main Street, for tax classification purposes. The central issue to be discussed during this tax classification hearing is whether all five classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal, shall be taxed at the same rate or a different rate for the fiscal year 2025, following MGL C40 Section 56. The Board of Assessors will provide relevant information regarding the tax rate, including the fiscal effects of available alternatives. Interested taxpayers are urged to attend the hearing. Written and oral statements from interested taxpayers will be accepted by the Select Board's office and considered at the hearing. Did we get any comments? No? Okay, just checking? Okay, so if I look at my official Apple time, I see 6:15. Take it off.
Okay, so I'm back. We do this every year, so...
You do identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, Yvonne Ramelard, Principal Assessor. Okay, so every year, as was stated in the legal notice, the Select Board has to decide if they want to split the rate or not, and it's our responsibility as the Board of Assessors to provide the Select Board with relevant information regarding the fiscal effects of splitting the rate. So tax rate, in simple form, is the tax levy divided by the town's total taxable valuation. This is known as the uniform tax rate or the single tax rate. This is where each class of property pays a share of the tax levy equal to its share of the total town value. And as you can see from the pie chart, the residential, this is with the uniform tax rate, the residential takes the bulk of the pie, as I like to call it, whereas the commercial properties, there are a little bit more than 5%. Do you want to go to the next slide? So the next slide shows if the Select Board chose to split the rate, and this example shows if they chose the maximum rate, which is 50%, the residential factor would be 0.97, and this would make a tax rate of 1343 for the residential properties, and the commercial properties would have a tax rate of 27, versus, I should have mentioned with the other slide, the proposed tax rate is 1380. So again, this pie chart looks very similar to the last pie chart, where the residential base is still paying the majority of the tax burden. I always like to give you what surrounding towns are doing. Since not everyone's fiscal '25 tax rate is available, I always give you the prior year. So we look pretty good. We fall basically in the middle. The only towns that split that are around us are Walpole and Westwood, and they do that because they have a much higher commercial base. Typically, towns at least are in the 80s, they don't really split. You have a few that might, but if you have 90% or more, typically you're going to find a single rate town. So historically, Medfield has always chosen a uniform tax rate. Shifting the tax rate would significantly increase the taxes for the commercial properties, and the residents would only pay, oh, so that's okay, you could go. Residential properties would only benefit from a small savings, which is made clear on the next slide. Okay, so here I give you an individual example. We have a residential and commercial property, which are both valued at 984-100, which happens to be our single-family average for fiscal year '25. And again, the proposed tax rate is 1380. So a single tax rate, they're both going to pay 13,581. When you have a 50% shift, your residential property is only going to save $365, whereas the commercial property would have an additional 6,790, which is So this is just another historical chart, what we've done, this has been the commercial percentage of the tax levy, it's pretty consistent, as you can see over the years. And again, our single-family average categories for the last five years, we are now at 984-100 with a single-family average tax bill of 13,581, if you choose the uniform tax rate. And so we would ask that you adopt a residential factor of one, if you so choose, which would result in the taxation of all property at the same rate. And that's it for my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Once again, I don't think it makes any sense to have a split rate, so thank you for bringing it forward. I did have some other questions, and I'll let everybody talk about this, and then I wanted to have some other things I was going to ask you about.
Sure. That has to do with the tax rate, or something different with the assessment?
Well, just with taxes in general. So it has to do with whether or not, how we're doing with some of the residential commercial development, some of the 40B projects in town like Chapel Hill Landing, whether you've looked at the issue of whether or not the taxes versus the municipal costs, how we're making out on that. The last time I talked to Ralph Costello about Old Village Square, he told me that there were 42 units and one school child, so we were making about $600,000 a year in real estate taxes from Old Village Square, but we had municipal costs of about $25,000, so that was a big moneymaker. I'm assuming that...
I think Chapel Hill is the same. There aren't many children, to my knowledge, up there. There's only a few children in that complex, so I would assume that it's probably the same type as Costello's over on Maple.
Yeah, I think Hinckley South is making us the same type of money as Old Village Square.
Well, Hinckley, you mean Ice House on Ice House? Yeah, those are all, those are all over 62.
Right, so they're no kids at all.
So I've met everybody in there, and there isn't a child in there that I've met, so... But I would assume that, you know, when you're 62, you probably won't have any school-aged children, or they'll be at the end of... Okay, I will, but, yeah, but most people, you know, at 62, you know, the school-aged children are either at the end of their high school years, or, you know, or they're out.
Yeah, so, and I just bring it up because I spent years trying to figure out how to bring businesses to Medfield so that we could reduce the reliance on the property, the residential property tax, and businesses and industries don't seem to want to locate here, but they do, people do want to live here, so if we build certain types of housing, we can reduce our taxes on the single-family homes by building the right type of housing.
Yeah, I think you mean by not increasing the school costs by a higher school population, yes.
Because that's the main municipal cost. All right, so I want to ask you later, then.
That's good.
Thank you.
No questions. The only caution for anybody out in the public that's watching this is to recognize the rate by itself doesn't really tell you anything. It's an interesting number, but you want to pay attention to the average cost of taxes, and what I saw, I think it was a slide in front of this one, there was not a radical jump in the tax, it's a jump, but it's not a radical jump.
Right.
Which is good, because at some point, presumably, we'll have a school project, and then I don't think you can promise there won't be a radical jump for some period.
So I did, did a little calculation, because I thought somebody might ask something about that. You didn't really ask, you just said it, but I'll state it, I'll just, I'll state it anyway. So the values did go up about 9%. If you go back to that single-family average, they went up about 9%, where the tax bill went up about 2.7%. So over the last five years, the taxes have gone up about 10.4, based on that chart. So if you had the single-family average house, and it maintained that value, now, of course, sometimes it doesn't, people need to be aware that your neighborhood might have increased significantly more than the average or decreased than the average, so this is just, again, the average. The single-family average has gone up 42% over the last five years. So, so that's about 8%, or actually, that's six years up there, I'm sorry, six years. So that's about 8% a year on the value, and this year we went up about nine.
You know, that actually does prompt a question. The single-family average, Pete's point about the various Hinckley South, Chapel Hill Landing, I can't say that about Chapel Hill, well, maybe I can, I'm not sure, but what I'm getting at is, as we start putting in more high-volume, presumably lower-cost affordable housing, that single-family average is actually being driven down by the housing stock itself, not just by the market. Is that a fair observation?
Yes, and what the, the projects that Pete brought up, those are all condos, so they are not in the single-family average calculation.
Oh, okay.
How does that work, then?
It's just single families 101s. Condos are considered 102s, and so they're not in the single-family average.
Ah.
They're just based on single-family homes, not in a condo development.
Interesting.
So...
Even though the condos could be going for a million each.
Or, or they could look like a, a single-family home, as some of them do, but they, they don't factor into that calculation.
Interesting.
The specific calculation, just based on a single-family home.
So in that case, I don't think we have very many affordable housing projects that are made up of a collection of single-family homes. Old Village Square, then, is, is single-family?
No, those are condos.
Those are condos, so those don't count in that part. Okay, so this is truly standalone single-family homes, and that would truly, so that really is kind of a reflection of the growth and value, but the average home that was an average home a year ago is probably still... But the average home that was an average home a year ago is probably still right there, unless something extraordinary happened, that one home or the neighborhood that would have driven it.
Right, right.
Okay.
Right, so the, the Maple Street condos, there aren't any affordable ones in there that would drive it. And a lot of those are valued higher than the single-family average.
That's why I was hesitating whether we're driving them up or driving them down.
Right, so, but there, there are some, in the other two complexes that Pete mentioned, there are some affordable units that are lower. But a lot of those market-rate condos are also very close to that single-family average.
I'm fascinated by Old Village Square, because it's, it's not age-restricted. But people with children just opt to not live there.
I think it's very attractive to, and over 55.
I know my neighbors rented there for a while, and they freaked out when the school system. So people may own it without kids, but then rent it to people with kids.
Do you, this is, you may not be prepared for this, so this I'm not, I'm not even here. Do you, what, do you, we know, well, somewhere, somebody knows what the single, what the, what the unit, average unit value is for all those 102 units. I'm just curious relative to...
No, but I could, I could tell you.
Just, I'm actually just curious whether, to Pete's point, Old Village Square, they'd be higher. Chapel Hill, not counting the affordable units at least, would probably be slightly, I think it would be slightly lower.
Yeah, slightly lower.
And I think Hinkley South could quite possibly be hitting awfully close now, still be lower, yeah.
Well, because it's small.
Yeah.
But the market rate on the units in Hinkley South isn't that far off the single-family averages, but I think...
But, but you have other condos, like the ones on Pleasant Street and Metacoment. Metacoment and Pleasant over there, the, the two, those are all assessed in the 200s.
Yeah, okay.
And there's quite a significant number of them. So that would pull that value down.
Okay.
The average down.
That's kind of what I was curious about, is whether the non-affordable condo units actually offer cheaper housing for people who want to move to Medfield or not. Because we know Old Village Square does not, but perhaps on average it does, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention and jump on top of me in any point, if I'm overstepping, but to give this all context where this discussion is going, is you're basically dealing with a closed system. So you've got the tax levy, which can go up each year by 2.5% plus new growth. And then, because that's a closed system, if, if market values of properties go up, then the tax rate comes down. If for some reason the market fell apart, the tax rate would go up.
Right, it's an inverse relationship.
So, yeah.
No, I appreciate this. I think we're all in unison that we are a town that fits into the one. You know, it's nice to be a Walpole and have a ton of commercial revenue and to be a Westwood, but we're not. And we don't have the land for that. So we do want to make sure that our, our small businesses that are here, we're partnering with and not penalizing them, so. Sure, you can jump over that mic if you'd like as well, that way you can be there to answer. Just introduce yourself.
Okay, so Ken Manning on the Board of Assessors. And I wanted to reiterate something that Yvonne touched upon here. If you look over time, of course, real estate values have gone up significantly, right? It's been a, a real bull market in terms of housing prices. Taxes of paid have, of course, gone up. But if you look at the effective tax rate here, the effective tax rate has actually gone down. And I'm not talking about the mill rate, but the actual taxes paid versus the assessed values has, has, the rate has actually decreased over time, interestingly enough. And so, you know, of course, everybody's paying more in taxes. But if you look at the actual value of the housing and the tax bill, it's actually declined, interestingly enough. Anyway, just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions before we take a vote?
I had just one more question. Are, are real estate markets going to change dramatically in February when accessory dwelling units become as-of-right in town? Have you figured out how that's going to work for you?
I have no crystal ball. I have no idea how that's going to work. And I'm not sure how many people are really interested in doing that. So it'll, we'll just see how that goes with permits, with the permitting process, to see if we have a large number or maybe just a few.
I would.
Good.
I don't like this legislation one bit.
No.
So one factor is actually going to be, are you on the town water and sewer versus septic, right? So houses that are on septic will, I think, have a much harder time doing ADUs, because the septic systems are not, are, are built for, you know, the existing structure. Versus if you're on town water and sewer, tying in, I think, will be much easier. So I suspect, to answer your question, it will depend to some extent where you are in town, how feasible the ADUs are going to be. And presumably, some developers may see opportunities in areas where there are, you know, sewer hookups versus septic, which I think is really going to be an impediment from the ADU front, so.
Good point, true.
Something to think about.
And we actually did sewer a lot of the town. I mean, there were areas like, down around, well, Bridlefield is a whole development that was made possible because a sewer was run up Rocky Lane, I think. And, and it was close enough that they could tie in.
Right.
But, because I don't think that land perked before, so.
Also depend on the garage, of course, right? If you have a, a two-car garage, it'd be much easier to build an ADU above that garage versus houses that don't have a, a two-car garage without an existing structure. So for example, the split-level houses, many of which have a garage built into the house, I think it'd be much harder to do an ADU versus, you know, kind of traditional colonial with a two-car garage with nothing built above that garage. An ADU clearly would be very possible there. So I think it's going to vary very much of where you are and the kind of structure that's existing.
So your point raises another one in my mind, which is, when I, if I build an ADU in my backyard, and then I, because I have sewer, and am I going to get charged a sewer tie-in fee? And I know that when, when we do a betterment for the sewer going by people's houses, it's a huge amount, it was like $20,000 or $25,000 that people got bettered for the sewer. But if, if the sewer's already there, and, and do we charge a huge tie-in fee for that? Can I ask Mo?
I'm saying yes, so.
The mic's up here, we put it in.
We make you come to the front now, Mo, sorry.
$2,500 for a new connection for sewer or water.
Okay, that's not the same as a betterment.
No.
Not the same as the betterment.
Okay.
But sewer's available, the betterment would most likely have been paid through that system already.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to take a vote? Oh, go ahead, Mark, sorry.
Just to follow up, one of the real concerns that myself and my colleagues had with that legislation is the fact that it prohibits a requirement of owner occupancy.
Right.
So you could have investment speculation going on.
Oh, sure.
We'll have to wait and see.
That's my question for Ken. Would you care to speculate on the level of real estate investment interest in buying houses here in Medfield and converting them to income properties?
Well, again, yeah, and, and I think if you have a house that's on sewer, that has a two-car garage, I mean, that's clearly going to make your property more ADU-able, is that a term?
It is now.
Versus, you know, a traditional split-level, you know, raised ranch type situation with a two-car garage underneath. Or if you're, you know, in parts of town where it's septic and in the leach field, isn't really possible that you could expand, et cetera. So it's going to be, again, it's going to kind of be idiosyncratic. But I suspect there will be parts of town where, you know, ADUs are just going to be more, more possible than others. And yeah, I think, I think clearly there would be some real estate speculation there, right? And you talk about...
I'm talking about BlackRock-type conversion of how, of owner-occupied housing.
Private equity buying and all of that.
Ah, okay. I mean, it's happening all over the country, right? So it could potentially here. So, you know.
One of the reasons I'm not at all happy with this legislation is at a time that the state is presumably trying to promote affordable housing, it's pursuing legislation that seems to me has a high likelihood of pulling owner-occupied housing out of inventory to give a, a gift to real estate companies like BlackRock, that basically now they can get two income streams out of a piece of property rather than one. And they were already buying, but now, my only hope is that they prefer to do that in places where they can buy houses cheaper.
Well, the key, though, of course, is expanding the number of housing units, right?
Well, but the reason we have a shortage is because there are so many housing units that are not, you can't buy, because they've been taken out and converted to rental units. That's a piece of this whole thing.
It's worth having a workshop.
Not happy.
In 2025, I think there's going to be a lot of questions about what can and cannot be done.
Well, we can't do anything until we do new zoning at the annual town meeting.
Right.
Planning Board will start doing their process just after the meeting.
Okay, good.
And the state is doing nothing as far as providing the required guidance.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, the towns are going to be able to step in and do some zoning guidelines, but this is...
They're supposed to have addressed the ADU stuff. They're still wrestling with the MBTA communities.
Sure. Okay. All right, take a vote.
Yep, I move that we adopt a residential factor of one in the taxation of all property in the town.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I am.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks, Yvonne.
Thank you.
To clear the public hearing closed.
Ah, to clear the public hearing closed. All right, so let's go back to our agenda here. Public hearing done, so now we get to go to Jean Minio. Jean, if you want to jump up, Bell Forge renovation update and vote to sign application for the MHDC.
So thanks for the opportunity to provide you with an update. We have currently raised over $17 million towards the capital campaign and the renovation for the Bell Forge Art Center. When we raise another $1.7 million, we will hit a milestone, at which point the board will greenlight our construction. So we feel like we are likely still on track to start construction, maybe by April. So we're preparing for the planning board hearing and the Medfield Historic District Commission hearing. That hearing requires the property owner to sign the form to get the hearing, so that's the request. I've also met with the building inspector. We've got everything that he'll need for us to apply for our building permit to get started with that. Again, ideal start date by April, so that we can open in the summer of '26. And the idea there is to open before the academic year starts, since our second building will have 16 classrooms. If we don't start before an academic year, we will lose that revenue while we're incurring the expenses of maintaining that, that property and the building.
I'm going to ask a quick question for you.
Yep.
So are you going, knowing that Trinity's not going to be in step with you, and they're going to be fencing off areas so that all those buildings can be kept protected from the public, and knowing that the buildings around you are going to be the ones impacted, does that prevent you potentially from summer of 2026, if they're, everything's fenced off and they're still working?
I don't think so. We've had conversations with them about where they would start with the buildings around us first and then move away from us. So our biggest concern right now, and our question for the select board, quite frankly, is how can we get the infrastructure done in time so we can open? And I'm not concerned about the roads, but we can't operate without water, sewer, and electricity.
Right. That's the... We won't get into that tonight, but we've all gone one-on, at least I know I've gone one-on-one with you, that Trinity's our biggest concern right now, it has to be, right? And, and anything patched to, to get you going, but not actually having everything done to the standards that, that Trinity's going to need. I mean, it's going to be interesting. Time's going to tell where they're going to be and, and how far along they can start their, their infrastructure. Because at the end of the day, we think that's what you really want to piggyback on and not try to do one-off.
That would be ideal.
Yeah.
But can it be done in time, is the question.
Yeah, well, okay.
So we're going to need help to figure that out.
So if Trinity comes in here next March, when they're supposed to close, and says, "We need another extension," that'll kill you then, it sounds like.
Unless we can get infrastructure without Trinity.
Okay.
Or if they can start before they take ownership, or, I mean, we need to have the conversations to figure out what's possible.
Yep, all right.
Anything else?
Lot of uncertainty.
I don't think you're going to get an answer to your question on that point tonight, but I, I think, at least speaking for myself, that I'm happy to do, for us to explore any feasible options that might be there. If we get to that bridge and we have to cross it, we'll, we'll do our best to help get you a useful answer. But, you know, to Eileen's point, we won't do something that's going to jeopardize or, you know, run against what Trinity wants. And we won't have extra money to throw into some sort of throwaway infrastructure. So we'd need some, you know, if it turns out that the, the main infrastructure can't be there in time, then the question becomes what sort of, what if, are there any alternatives to that main infrastructure that's affordable and feasible, that again, doesn't interfere with Trinity? The one thing I'll say, my observation, you know better than I, but my observation is throughout this whole process, I've actually been struck by how hard Trinity's been trying to make sure that they're supportive of your project. So I, at least we'd go into what could be a difficult conversation, just because it's a hard issue, with some degree of confidence that Trinity would be operating in good faith to try to find a way to make it work.
I agree.
I think they've committed already, that is, to your point about the construction. They've, if I recall, this is probably going back at least two or three years, I believe Trinity at some meeting had committed to making sure that whatever construction they did, they would make sure that Bell Forge would at least be able to continue to operate. So it's not like you're going to be a, you're not going to be cloistered behind fences and no way into the building. They're, they already have committed to doing that from an operational standpoint, so.
They've been a great partner.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that they will do their best to continue to be a great partner. I think we probably need to know what the timing really does work out to be to know whether, how big an issue this is or what the options are. All I'm saying is that I certainly am prepared to do my best to find a solution that's feasible.
Thanks, well, we need to keep doing this quickly, because we're, we're going to be starting soon.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm just going to put a dose of reality on it, that it's a long-term project, right? There's no reason to rush when we know that Trinity is building a, a destination that's for decades and decades to come, just like your, your art center. So if, I'm not, I'm not trying to be doomsday, but knowing that they're going to be bringing up, to the best of my knowledge, infrastructure right up cottage, right? Like, that's, that's where you want your water and electric and all of that. Nothing coming up the backside of, let's say, a Long Meadow or something, where then it's going under an easement for a parking lot and all this craziness, where if it, if it means at the end of the day, we're, you're, you're tapping into what's really the most feasible and not a Band-Aid approach just to get 12 months ahead of something. To me, that's just silly, where if it, if it should delay it a little, delays it a little, but you still have long-term success ahead, because you have everything that you really need, because you've got the infrastructure of a Trinity, electrical, water, et cetera, coming up, versus something that you might have to do, don't take us the wrong way, but cutting corners, because you're not dealing with hundreds of millions, you're dealing with 25, 30, 40 million. So every penny's going to matter to you. Not that it's not going to matter to them, but you're not a profit center, they are at the end of the day. So it's, that's just, I just, I, I, listen, I hope, I hope that they're pulling their permits sooner rather than later. Now that we're MBTA compliant, we know that we should be getting, knock on wood, you know, support from the state. It's, it's not like we didn't comply to MBTA and that would stop us. So, you know, the ducks are lining up there. And certainly Trinity's trying to move along at fastest pace they can. Every time I go up there, I see Dan doing his thing. So they're, it's not like they're, they're shying away from it.
Right, no, I agree. So, but would easements be an option?
What's that?
Would easements be an option? It's less than ideal, but if, if we have to control it to get it done, then maybe that's the way we have to think about that as an option.
Yeah, everything's an option, and it comes down to what's reality, right? Like, what's, what's going to set you up for success in 2030, 2040, 2050, and not look back and go, ugh, if we had just waited six months and we had the right piping, the right this, the right that, we could expand more, we could do the following. Like, that, that's where, I mean, this, I look at when I did construction on my house, why I didn't spend $20,000 more in 2000 to go up two feet would change the whole, and I didn't, because I was, at that time, I was like, I got to get it done, I got to get it done. Now I look back and I'm like, that was a bonehead move. If I just stepped back, that's why I'm looking at this, like, let's not do something for the sake of doing it. And then you look back in 10 years and go, you know what, we can't do this expansion, we can't do that, because we don't have the right infrastructure to support it, and then it would cost you that much more. So I'm just throwing that out there. Listen, I truly hope that they're ahead of you, and you're saying, hey, to catch, you know, we got to catch up to you and not them catch up to, to you.
All right, then let's find another way to get it done.
You know, so Jean, two, go ahead, Pete.
Did you have a question?
No, go. Two points. One, when you said is an easement an option, I think if an easement is needed to pursue the preferred permanent solution, it's an option. If the easement is needed to pursue a temporary solution... If the easement is needed to pursue a temporary solution, the question I would have on that one is there's a lot of money, even if it's a temporary solution, it's gonna be expensive, and I don't know where that money, money's coming from. So that, so relative to what you're talking about, I'm guessing that maybe, you know, if it's a temporary solution, you think it could be a temporary easement? Okay, but but there's still a price tag there, and I don't know what that price tag is. Well, so I don't think we're gonna, so I don't think we'd do a patch, like a second solution just because we had to do it to gain a year, that then becomes unnecessary part of the permanent solution that would have covered the answer. I have a hard time picturing how that works. But to Eileen's point about, well, it's another year, so what, my sense in talking with you is that the challenge you have at Bell Forge is that it's a little like when you're sailing a boat in a sailboat race and you've caught the wind. If you sit there and you mishandle your sails and you lose the the flow, suddenly you're sitting, doesn't, even though the wind is still around, you're no longer in the flow. Your wind is donors who are throwing, who are gonna put money into this. You've got seventeen million dollars, you need thirty, thirty-five, forty million dollars, whatever it is. Some of those donors won't put their money down until they see your boat is sailing strong.
True.
And if suddenly you're forced to go an extra year without that help, then the momentum of the whole thing goes down for you, which is, so to your, the reason you can't just say, yeah, it's another year, we'll just, you know, we'll just run another summer show and sell margaritas and that, that'll help, is that basically.
Not enough margaritas.
But my point is, there's a momentum issue here that you're trying to manage.
In addition to potentially having a facility without, if we can't have the revenue from the educational programs, but we have to pay for the ongoing operations of the center, that's also problematic. So that's where the timing issue is a concern for us, but the biggest concern is how do we get the infrastructure in place in time for us to open?
Okay.
You want a motion for that? And who is signing, who signs, is it the chair or is it the town administrator?
I usually sign them.
Okay. I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the application for the MHDC in support of Bell Forge's renovation.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. All right, next up is Medfield Community Market to request use of Meeting House Pond for community market.
Lauren Zombrock's here, let me bring her.
All right. Good evening.
My fellow executive committee member, Lauren Luster, is capable to bring her voice on.
Absolutely.
Can you turn that up, too?
You can't see it, Lauren, but Mike just gave you a microphone here in the room. It's at the bottom of your screen now.
All right. Up, there we go, there's Maria.
Oh, no, we only, we only make people panelists on purpose.
So, yeah, thank you for having us, so we enjoyed our first successful year of the market, and given Montrose's construction project, we are looking for alternate locations starting in twenty twenty-five, and one of the spots that we were thinking of is Meeting House Pond. And our understanding is that part of that property is owned by First Parish Unitarian Universalist Church, and we've already received permission from them. We would have a contract to sign with them, but our understanding is another part of that lawn area is owned by the town. So we are seeking approval from the select board to host the market there.
Pete, any questions?
So can you maybe just outline, it would have been the same schedule, Sunday mornings, or?
Yes, yes, so Sunday mornings, the market hours are nine to one, but it's really more like eight to two in terms of setup, vendors arriving and cleanup. So, yes, still thinking Sunday mornings, we don't have an exact opening date or ending date, we're probably late May, early June through earlier mid-October.
Okay.
Okay.
And that area gets used pretty heavily for Medfield Day, so that would be a squeeze that weekend to have both events, but it can certainly happen, I guess.
And we could also, you know, we didn't take any weekends off this year, but holidays, Medfield Day, we're flexible in terms of just taking off that weekend if that's, you know, more conducive to putting that emphasis on Medfield Day, because obviously that's where everything's happening on that day.
Well, Medfield Day is over on Saturday, it's amazing how quickly it cleans up and clears out, but I think the tents might still be up on Sunday.
Okay.
So first of all, congratulations on starting a successful new venture in town, and it's a great addition to the town. So I appreciate having you do it, so.
Thank you very much.
So I guess I'm, I'm basically in support of having you have the permission to use the area myself.
You all set?
Yep.
Lauren, the only question I had, a few years ago, we had a a market there at that site. Is, is your plan to use the same, literally the same location, or will this, so this truly is over near the pond?
Behind the church, yeah.
It's not, it won't be where it was a couple of years ago, it'll back, it probably gives you more room to work with, I would think, so.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, I don't have, it seems to me it's a nice thing to do, and actually, I, I think it's probably nice, Montrose probably, Montrose probably gave you a lot of room, but everybody had to kind of go in the back entrance, I almost would think that if this location was, it's more visible. And it's, it's, I don't know that it's more accessible, literally, but it's certainly more visually accessible, so I think that's, it's fine by me.
Yeah, no, yeah, I totally support it, I've got no questions, I think it's a great idea, great, great alternative.
So we're committing, we're committing the town part, and you're on your own with the Unitarian Church.
Okay.
Yep, okay. I move that we approve the Medfield Community Market's request for the use of Meeting House Pond for the community market in twenty twenty-five, understanding the market will be running same day and presumably time as it did this year.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so next up is memo to request the placement of holiday-themed neon and rope-light silhouettes on front lawn of the townhouse and in Warrior Park from December third, twenty twenty-five to January. I'm assuming January first, there's no date there, January?
I think they take them down sometime in January, I don't think they have a set date yet.
Okay, well, shall we, shall we put a date no later than a certain date, so it's not milling around there if we approve this?
Sorry.
Oh.
My name is Eric Vaden, I'm a Geico local agent that you may have seen at Medfield Day and all the other things.
Oh, yeah.
I'm also a board member of Memo. Russ and the committee, or the board asked me to to step in today just to kind of answer questions, maybe discuss why we need this a little bit more. Traditionally, in the past, we've hung those silhouettes over Route one oh nine on some pretty sturdy cables. This year, someone was up doing some work on another thing, not related, and happened to notice that a few of them had frayed slightly.
Oh, yeah, I heard that.
We didn't have enough time, by the time we found out, to have someone inspect the integrity of those cables. We don't feel comfortable placing them up there, and, you know, in the, in the event that they may fall or or cause problems. So we've, we're seeking alternatives.
Mark?
So Frank showed me photographs this morning, and I have to advise you that I'm concerned that they run afall of the unattended structures by law or policy that you adopted. They are actual depictions opposed to just an abstract light display, and I, I'm concerned that by allowing that you're opening the town up to other demands for use.
And that's for both the town hall and Warrior Park?
Yes. But certainly that, if you were gonna prioritize them, I, I was in the town hall, we've, we've been pretty strict in never allowing anything.
Okay, that's what I thought.
There may have been some things allowed in the park in the past, but again, once you allow this, you're going to have a difficult time saying no to others.
Okay. Pete, any?
But if we allow these, we open the door to what we might not want in the future, is what you're saying. That's correct, we, you adopted an actual written policy, I guess it's a few years ago now. No unattended structures, period, we've, and we've had some, some charitable groups approach us to recognize particular celebrations and things, months, mental health and suicide awareness and things like that, and you've been forced to say no to, so.
Okay.
Hate to be Scrooge, but that's what attorneys do.
Y'all?
I have.
Are y'all set?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, and Christine's seen this, because I responded by emails, I'm, I'm just looking to pull my email up here. First question, these lights, these are all the lights that we've always put up every year, these are not new lights, these are just lights we've always had up?
Always had these every year. There were some new ones that were purchased to replace old ones, just because they were burned out and.
So which ones, so which ones are the new ones?
This is all of them collectively, I don't know exactly which ones are brand new versus, I think this one is fairly new. Because it's brighter, but there, there were some damaged bulbs in some of these, so we had to, we had to pay for new ones to be made.
Okay. Is the long term, so there's an issue of frayed cables that, so we used to put them up, we used to put them up across the, across the road. And the reason we're not putting them across the road this year is because the cables are frayed, we don't have time to fix that. Therefore, we have the lights, we'd like to put the lights up.
And, and one other item, and Russ and I had talked about this, we don't have a current agreement with Eversource to go between the poles. And the current cables that are there are not, are no longer acceptable to Eversource either, so we need to, we've been working with them to try and come up with a new agreement as well.
That's fine, so my basic question is, are we being asked a one-year question? Or are we being asked a change in practice question?
This is, this would be just a one-year question, you know, I think the committee needs more time to work with all the various parts to repair or replace whatever cables are missing or frayed or what have you. We don't even know the extent of the damage, to be honest. We don't know if it's, if it's cosmetic or if it's, you know, structural.
That's enough, it's a, this is a one-year question that we're being asked and we're deciding on, so that's the first point. This town hall right now, during the holiday season, we do put things up on the town hall, not lights, but we.
We put wreaths up.
We put wreaths up.
Yeah.
So the idea of putting decorations up for the holiday is not in and of itself a, a change in our practice. Where I'm going with this, Mark, and I, we join in on this, if, I'm looking at this in one, in one sense, saying this is, although Memo sponsors this, this is not Memo saying we want to decorate the town and make statements about what we're doing, this is Memo, I think historically, providing a civic service to the town to help the town decorate for the holiday season.
Correct.
Which presumably, perhaps not as well or as extensively, but perhaps to some extent, if nobody stepped forward, the town would still be doing some things, you know, hanging candy canes from telephone poles or doing something to to capture the holiday season. So the fact that these, you're trying to do this in a different place is not changing the nature of what this town has been doing in at least the twenty, almost thirty years that I've lived here, and I think well longer than that, given people's comments about the state of the lights that we have in Baxter Park, go ahead.
So there's a couple of things. Number one, legally, it makes a big difference where it is and what's been done.
Okay.
Number two, this is, this, we kind of backed into some things, which started out as strictly lights of various colors on the trees, and that was added to, including depictions of things. So there's a whole you're going up from the simple lights, which are viewed rather neutrally, and the biggest arguments I've heard are all white lights versus colored lights, but it hasn't gone any further than that, but once you start depictions, whether it's secular things or religious things or seasonal things, whatever, you're then opening yourself up to wherever that particular display is, allowing others to display at the same time.
So my, so my point, and I, and my point is, if, that's why I started with the question of these new lights, or have they been here? So we've been doing this as a practice for at least thirty years, is what I'm hearing. Now, Mark, that doesn't mean I'm discounting your point about where you do it makes a difference. So if we've been doing it in a cable across the road near Baxter Park, where we decorated Baxter Park, I can see that as being the practices that we associate all of those decorations with Baxter Park. I can, in our past, we, we had, I think it was when our, our display policy first came up for discussion, Pete, you might refresh my memory if I've got any of this wrong, but when the Medfield Coalition on Suicide Prevention wanted to bathe the town hall in purple and turquoise lights, we said no, not because anybody's against suicide prevention, but because we have a policy that we don't allow town property to be used to advance private messages.
Right.
And the question then came up, well, what if, but what if we did Baxter Park? And we said, well, that's, that's a softer, you know, so this is why I'm, I'm homing in on your location, Mark. That's, that's a place where we have had the practice to do that, because it's not, it's not the town hall supporting a message, it's not, for that matter, even the library, although we recognize the library has its own board of directors, and we didn't absolutely try to horn in on that. So I am, I do take your caution about not wanting to move these things, certainly to the town hall, possibly to the library, and maybe slightly less possibly, but still possibly even Warrior Park, because those are all new locations for these things. Would it be possible to have these lights at Baxter Park?
It's a good question, we, we asked that, that was the first place we went, and we were told by Parks and Rec that we could not.
And that's, I think, Parks.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to clarify, because they're not here tonight, I did speak to Parks and Migration, this was not presented when Russ originally requested lighting at the Baxter, at Baxter Park. Russ did call Mel and ask if the lights could be put up, Mel didn't have the authority to act on behalf of the board and couldn't get another board meeting together. So I don't think they've been told, you've been told no, because they don't like the lights, they've been told no, because they couldn't get a, a meeting together.
Okay, got it. Now, I'll, again, I wasn't sure about the lights being new or old, and the reason was, some of this stuff, I guess I've never noticed that closely anyway. With a Star of David and a menorah, those are clear religious symbols of the season, I would.
And new, as far as I know.
You think they're new, okay, well, then there's, if they're, that's why I asked the question, because if they're new.
You may recall, I think, a, a young woman came, a student came forward last year and raised an issue about
I do.
Having a menorah somewhere.
Yep, I remember that, I also heard somebody say we've always had one somewhere in Baxter Park, I've just never seen it. You know, for anybody who's listening who cares one way or the other about this thing, what I, what I'm concerned about, and it happens to be with those two, but I see it as a policy issue for us, it's like, if those two are there, then I would fully expect other churches in town to say, hey, we want a creche, we want, we want a cross, we want all these things, and the sad thing is that the holiday season should be capable of embracing all of that. But I'm not sure that it is, not in the big picture, not right now in today's world, we have, we have Muslims who live in this town. And that, turning the holiday season from what I would hope is a spirit that it's intended to have into yet another potential. into yet another potential platform for competition is the part that I'm very cautious about here. So, you know, I'm kind of, I'm mostly inclined to say, "Let's see if there's a way we can at least allow the non-questionable decorations to be out there." If you have them, you bought them, they're new. It'd be nice to have them out there. Given that we don't actually know for sure that Parks and Rec wouldn't allow it, I would be inclined to say what we ought to do is to ask you to go back to Parks and Rec and see if we can get a clearer readout on that, whether some or all of those can be handled other, you know, other than on a cable across the road for this year, with the understanding that next year, we're going to try to get it back up where it was.
I think the only challenge we have there is.
I think it's a timing issue that they're, they're looking to do this on Friday.
Yeah, because the holiday stroll is Friday night, Saturday. So kind of the holiday festive is this weekend.
But I'm not sure we can react that fast, but I'm open to the two of you. I could be talked out of it if I can hear a good argument because I feel like Scrooge sitting there saying, "No holiday decorations." But it's kind of, there's more to this than just plug and.
There's definitely more to this. The, I think, I think there are a couple of curveballs thrown into this that no one expected. The, the cabling, it's just, it's better for us not to do that. And so, you know, I think the idea here is, can we, can we liven up the place a little bit for the holidays? I hear you on the menorah and the Star David, maybe, maybe removing them from this particular year. Just put up the.
And this is a policy issue because I'm, I'm thinking if we do that, we should let everybody in town know that as opposed to just have something show up. This is a particularly painful year to even be having a hard line on this because of what's going on in the Middle East right now. It's, it's a rotten time to be saying no. By, by view at least, but.
So the only thing I, I see is there's four here that, that depict, I mean, the Christmas tree is Christmas tree. That's what that is, right? And you've got Santa Claus. So those four, you're actually saying, you're calling out, these are festive, the, the bells, the holiday wreath and a snowman. There's, to the best of my knowledge, there's no religious.
Now, Santa Claus probably, if the Christmas tree doesn't make it, that's.
That's what I'm saying. There's four. There's four that don't make it, right? That, like, if you can't, if you're not going to do those two, in my mind, you can't do these two, right? But the other three, you can't.
You're talking Baxter Park. Baxter Park's already been implicated, if you will. And you're really probably not changing anything if you let them all go up there. If you go, if you're moving outside of Baxter Park, then it doesn't really help to cherry pick them because you.
It does make a difference if, only because I haven't noticed. It's not because I don't know this. But if the Star David and the menorah are new, then that's, that's not what we have been doing in the past. And if we're going to, if we want to change the policy and what's allowed for decorations, I think that policy should be clearly changed, not three weeks before the holiday. But rather, that should just be a policy change that we make that's out there. And then if people want to work to do stuff, they can. And I'll say that with apologies to whoever it is that took the, if this knew, that took the initiative to do it. I don't blame you for your desire to do that. I'm not on board with sort of just allowing it to happen when that then creates, effectively, that means we've made a policy change. And I would not, I'd prefer not to make that policy change in the heat of the moment less than a month before holidays.
So, so are you opposed to doing a snowman, a wreath and a holiday bell in Warrior Park?
I'm not opposed to anything. We can make modifications.
Yeah, but I would, I would rather not open up the Warrior Park thing because I don't think those three things in Warrior Park is going to make, is going to make a difference. I'm, I'm suggesting it would be better if it was done in Baxter Park because that's where we put the decorations.
Well, I think I got you there. Is that, is that they, if it's Tuesday night, if it's Parks and Rec, are we even going to, do they have a meeting this week? So, so that means we're 48 hours out from that.
Yeah.
And then the stroll is, you know, they're going to get underway at 4 o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday, on Friday.
What I would, so I, I, I just would rather not be stampeded into putting three things up in a new location that we haven't done. And that doesn't, that's without prejudice. I'm happy to have that conversation at some point, but.
I think we just needed more time.
Yeah. And what I would suggest, I don't know if anybody who lives on Main Street close to where the holiday stroll is, wants to put these decorations up on their private property.
Yeah.
I would encourage that to be something that could be done. And that might even include the churches.
Yeah, it's not just, it's certainly not limited to residential, any kind of private property.
So some of the restaurants, if they've got furniture, if they want to put it out or somebody to have a shop?
Anybody.
There's, there's two churches on Main Street that might be willing to do that.
That was one of the suggestions last year with the menorah, that it could be on private property.
Okay. So I think what I'm hearing is unfortunately, we can't approve something tonight just because.
Okay.
Where we're at and.
But it's important to understand why and.
Hundred percent. Understood. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All right. So we jump to number six here. Director of Public Works, Mo Gulett, requests approval for the following contracts. First one up to bat there, Mo, is $102,000 for a Ford F-550 utility vehicle from McGovern Municipal HQ.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
These five contracts are all either capital, capital projects that were approved prior to and/or opera projects that were approved prior to. As far as the F-550 utility vehicle, it's just one of our vehicle replacements that we had on Capitol that was $402,000, looking for your approval for the contract.
My question, Mo, just had to do with the utility box that costs about as much as the pickup or the truck does.
This is the mechanic's vehicle that has a lot of inverters, gas pumps, everything for emergency services on the road.
All right.
So that's why the, the expense.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
Even, no, I, I told, I told Mo that I wasn't going to have any tough questions for him. I think there were a couple of administrative editorial. What it is, is going to the wrong template still has some of the same mistakes that Ben had in a couple of his. And they're, they're insignificant, but we ought to correct the template so we start with everything right. But I told him that I would have a question for, I, I would, I would protest once again about the form of the contract, Mark, that I've raised before. So this is, we are buying a truck. And it's not clear to me why the person selling us the truck, we're imposing a $2 million insurance. We, you know, if we, if we were buying a car, we wouldn't require the salesman selling us the car to have evidence of insurance and to carry us or, you know, otherwise carry. It makes no sense to me. And the termination clauses to me are a liability to the town. Because what the termination clause is saying is if the contract is terminated before it's completed, then we're on the hook for the accrued costs up to that point. When you're buying a truck, the truck shows up, you've bought it. If you suddenly change your mind and say, "Hey, I want to cancel the order." And they say, "Hey, look, we've done this and we've done that. We won't, we're only charging the $102,000. We're only charged a half liquidated damages." And to me, it opens us up for a liability. So those two things, you've heard it from me before. I still don't understand that form. And I think it actually is not in the best interest of the town to have that kind of a termination clause on what is basically a straightforward purchase.
In all due respect, I, I would take issue with you on both those provisions.
On what basis? Would you do it with a termination?
Well, let's start with the insurance one first. All right. So as a general practice, first of all, whoever you're dealing with, you want insurance. Whether you ever have to use it, whether it comes within coverage, you want it there. Because there's no limitation other than your imagination, what a source of third-party liability could be. Now, in particular, so that's substantive. In addition, it also establishes that you've got an established and reputable business, that they're carrying that kind of insurance, they're capable of it. I've had umpteen dealings, frankly, more so in Franklin than here, with, with various vendors and contractors that couldn't or wouldn't get the insurance coverage. So they're fly-by-nighters and if something, that's a big red flag that something bad could happen.
Okay, I'll, I'll grant that, although I have to ask, Mo, do we require $2 million liability insurance from people we buy rock salt from?
Yes.
We have that on our contract, yeah.
I'll back off on the.
And they're big outfits. They're big outfits.
Okay, I'll back off. If you're using it as a means of validating that the supplier that's selling you a truck is a valid not-fly-by-night.
Well, plus, in addition, this, this is, this has an FOB term, which means that they're going to deliver it. Something can happen while the delivery is taking place. So that's why there's auto insurance. General liability insurance, there's a tail to liability claims. Generally, the insurance that's in place when something happens, the actual incident kicks in, even though there could be a, a long tail or three of statute limitations, for instance. So hypothetically, somebody gets in the truck, he's driving, the brakes fail, the, the steering fails, something fails, they hit somebody, kill them. You're going to go back up the chain. So you want that insurance in place. It, it, it's hypothetical, but it's better to have it than not. As far as.
Well, if that happened, delivery, we haven't taken the delivery of the truck, so it's not.
No, no, I'm saying that somebody could, third party primarily. General liability is third-party insurance. It's, and they're going to be looking around for anybody and everybody, depending how many people, how serious the injuries are or death or whatever.
Okay, I'll accept your legal.
All right, so the termination thing, again, it's it's just a tool. It's wholly for the benefit of the municipality. It's at your option. You don't have to. One's for cause, one's for convenience. We've actually employed it in Franklin with vehicles because suddenly during COVID and thereafter, the supply chain broke down. And we were finding that vehicles that were, that were just showing up months and even longer from when they were anticipated to be delivered. So you want to at least have the option to say, again, before they, before they perform, we're cut, we're, we're terminating the contract. Now, in the absence of that termination clause, yes, you're breaching the contract. Gives you no right to just terminate. So it's just a right. You don't have to use it.
That's not, no, no, no. I don't have a problem with the fact that we can terminate the contract if they don't deliver on time or something like that. I have a problem that if we do terminate the contract, the provisions are, they then can come in and ask us, basically bill us for whatever expenses they have incurred today.
Whether it's a cause or a convenience clause being, and, and you're correct, if, if, but for instance, in the case of a vehicle, they're a dealer. So it's, they're just, nothing's happening. It's just waiting in line to get to it. And months and months go by and maybe the opportunity arises to get another vehicle. Maybe you don't need anymore, whatever happens. And you, again, just want the opportunity to.
Yeah, I'm not arguing with the idea. You want the opportunity to terminate. I'm arguing with the, the terms of the consequence.
So they don't have expense under, under those scenarios. If they're actually manufacturing something, it's a different story.
It does. I believe, that's why I reacted, is I believe this clause does in fact have expenses.
No, I'm saying they don't have actual expense. It provides, it provides for expenses, not their profit.
Right. So on this $102,000 truck, where half of the value is in this add-on component in the back and we suddenly cancel it, they go, "Oh, we had it, we custom, we custom designed that add-on component for you, so we won't charge $102,000, but we incurred $41,000 in customized design for the back bed and you need to send us $41,000." That's what I'm worried about. It's like, I don't know how they would, you know, I don't know, to your point about the liability insurance.
Costs and expenses. If, yes, if it was a custom order, that would be a different story. For instance, fire trucks, they're all custom-built. Ambulances, they're all custom-built. That's a difference, that's different.
All right. Now ordinarily, if someone says, "We have clause, we have terms in the contract, but don't worry about them," because they would never be invoked. The absolute rule is then take them out. So, and I'm not going to try to get you, you're going to, we're going to prove the contract tonight, but that's not the issue. The issue is, why do we keep getting crap contract, you know, crap terms? Like, these are terms that expose us to the supplier being able to come after us for some part, at least part of the purchase price of this truck if, for whatever reason, it's, we decide we need to terminate the order. That's the part that drives me nuts. I don't even think I'm talking about you, Mark. I think you've said these before. This is a state contractor, you know, I think. I'm saying, why do we write contracts this way? It exposes, we're the ones who are being exposed to a cost issue.
They actually have similar language in the state, blah, if that's where this came from, if, if any of these came.
Makes no sense. This one, and I only did it on this one because the other ones involved the contractor coming and doing the installation and everything. So I didn't, I didn't do that on the installation. I just did it on this one because we're buying a truck. And the truck is going to show up. We're going to say, "Hand you the keys. Thank you very much. Here's the title. Here's the payment."
You could have, you could have just gone with the termination for cause clause, which is, if you want, you know, would, it's not a big deal in this particular case.
Okay.
I'll give you that.
I've made my point. All right. One to one. You got the liability. I got the termination. Okay, well, we'll let that go.
So one, just to be clear on contracts.
But I want points at Syracuse Place, obviously.
In the future, should I be changing any kind of?
We should talk.
In the future, you should, you should follow the guidance of the town council. Who, who knows that if you keep sending me these. Only on this one though.
Shoot, I'm doing it right, huh?
Not the other one. So I told, I told you, you weren't, you weren't going to, you weren't, you weren't going to be in the, in this target area.
That's, that one's up for vote. So do you want to?
So that one's up for vote. You ready?
Yes.
Okay, I got to get to the right words. Okay, I move that we approve the contract of $102,000 for Ford F-550 utility vehicle from McGovern Municipal HQ.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right. Excellent. Next up is $29,825 to furnish and install a new generator for the Indian Hills Sewer Lift Station from New England Generator Corp.
So this is the improvements that we're making at the Indian Hills Pump Station for our lift station and for the sewer. New England Generator was the, the lowest bidder out of, out of the three bid quotes that we got.
Pete?
So I would just point out to you that it, it says the job site address is 55 Main Street. That perplexed me, but now I see that it's on Indian Hill, so that probably is 55 South Street, I'm guessing. But we don't want that to become an issue.
Where was the 55 Main Street?
It's under the proposal, the job site address in the middle.
In our contract, it does state that be delivered to the location, but not, so this is just, proposal is for compensation and scope.
Okay, I, I didn't see your, your language about, because I was trying to figure out where it was going, but, and I couldn't from my review. But I don't read them as carefully as everybody else.
But for the record, I want to welcome Pete to the contract review table.
This is the one, I think, down where Indian Hill comes into South Street?
Yeah, it's right at the bottom of it. It's right. If you, if you don't stop at the end of Indian Hill, you're going to hit it.
And then, then you'd want insurance.
Yeah, that's why. That wouldn't be 55 South.
Ready?
All right.
Okay. Let's see. I move that we approve the contract of 20, for $29,825 to furnish and install a new generator for the Indian Hill Sewer Lift Station from New England Generator Corp.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right, next up, $105,000 for MXU transmitters from Core and Main LP.
So this one here, this is on, this is in the next part of the select board agenda, which kind of put in the cart before the horse, but it's going to be, make a lot of sense to you in a little bit.
So you, you want, you want an approval?
So, so C is dotted on G down below.
So I have a new contract that has the exact amount for the exact amount of the contract and proposal. So I did get a new proposal.
Yes, I saw that.
You can blame all of this on Norfolk County.
Yes. 838 is what was approved.
Okay.
Or what we're hoping to. Or what will hopefully be approved.
Never done one of those.
So it's $119,000.
$829.66.
Yeah, I did the, I had that all-
Let's call that 830. We'll round up the 830 cents, how's that? Yeah, and Mo, the issue was that we would have approved the number that was in the agenda, and that would have been lower than the proposal, so you wouldn't have had the money to pay for the-
Yes.
And so then they came back in with a slightly different number.
The actual price, because it's $168.30 per unit, the money that's hopefully be approved in the next segment of this meeting.
Oh, really, I get it.
So it would be contingent upon that for this contract.
I see.
Did you go down and vote that?
Now I understand, okay.
It's, that's up to, that's up to the board.
So does it make sense to read C, and then also with the vote to increase the purchase of MXU units from $105,000 to $119,838?
However-
No, but that's the ARPA allocation.
However, the 838 is actually going to be-
830.
829.60 because of the way it works out per unit. I can't purchase an additional unit.
Okay.
Just a change doesn't work out.
Okay.
So-
So $119-
Math is hard.
Yes.
$119,830 on this contract is sufficient funding for this contract.
Correct.
And then, and that's a separate question, of course, we don't want to be on the hook to have to pay it out of town funds, but that's a separate question from approving the ARPA funding, and basically you're saying, if you go to approve this contract, you probably know that you're going to have to approve the ARPA funding request unless you think it's really important for the town.
So this was added, this was added, the contracts were on before the changes.
Before we had to do the changes.
Yep.
And that's because of the letter we received on Tuesday, November 27th, at 4:59 PM.
Well, we work well, we're nimble, as Norfolk County does. All right, so.
Okay, are we ready?
I think so.
So I had a question, Mo, as to what these things are.
So these are the transmitters for our water meters. We have a new FlexNet system that we have installed onto the water tower that's going to be able to read real-time data from our water meters around town.
Good.
To do that, we need to-
The water meter in my house, you mean?
Correct.
Wow.
So the MXU, which is the transmitter, will be able to be picked up by the antenna that's on the water tower, that we'll be able to get real-time information, and we're going to hopefully have, be able to have the residents be able to track their own water usage so that they can see if they have an issue. We will do our best to try to help that as well, but we would like the residents to look at their water usage so that they understand what they're using, if they have any issues.
Yeah, that'll be very helpful, those people that have a leak or something, they'll get early warning. Because you only get it every six months, otherwise.
Right.
So like, if Pete takes extra time in the shower on a cold winter night, we're going to know about it?
We're going to know about it.
So my neighbor used to get my water bill, and I got their water bill. They had five people in their house, I had one. And I never, this is like 15 years ago, and I went to, I was like, and they were like, ooh, yeah, okay, we'll address that. I was like, how? So I like having this, being able to tap right in.
They have this word smart points, is that something, is that a-
That's just the name of the individual unit that comes from census.
Okay, it's called a smart point.
It's a smart point, MXU.
Understood, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, you ready?
Yep.
Uh, let's see, I move that we approve a contract in the amount of $119,830 for MXU transmitters from Core and Main LP.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, next up is a contract value of $38,390 for a water and sewer rate evaluation and M35 water audit from Capital Strategic Solutions.
It's actually an M36 audit? No, it's okay? That's just American Water Works Associations, yes. I'm going to get Frank at least once.
I love meetings right after a long holiday break.
Welcome to the contract review team.
Capital Strategic Solutions is going to help us get, finally get a water and sewer rate study completed with the audit of our water losses that we have in town, which is kind of unaccountable water through leaks and through different uses that we don't have accountability for yet.
Okay, very straightforward.
So, Mo, what does this get you that we don't have now?
It's going to develop a plan for us to move forward with a professional company showing us how to manage our water and sewer rates more efficiently, and according to the standards of what's happening in the industry.
Right setting, basically.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, Mo, you want me to ask you about how the monthly amounts that are being invoiced are calculated, or should we talk about that offline?
I'm glad you asked that, yes. I have an email here from the Capital Strategic Solutions. They say that, so each month, each month, we will receive a monthly invoice, which includes details of exactly how many hours were worked on particular tasks. The invoices will include a description of the task performed, similar to what you see in the engineering, time, and materials contracts.
So do they, so do you already, are you, so-
I'm okay.
We're not going to screw the contract, we're going to get through that, but my point was, when a contractor says, okay, here's the total, and this is a small contract, so again, it's not, it's the contracting principle that's the issue. Contractor says, okay, here's what it's going to cost for the contract, and what we will do is bill you monthly based on progress we've made. My immediate question is always, how are you measuring, how are you determining progress? And when I looked at what they had submitted, there was no rate information, so if they tell you, well, we did 20 hours, here's the cost, but if, I don't know whether they have like a single rate per hour, or whether you do other work with them and you know what their rates are.
So engineering firms are always using this type of invoicing. Every time we get an engineering company, anytime we have an engineering project, it's based on the hours, hours that they, it's a progress that they've done.
So it's based on a rate per hour?
Yes, they'll have a-
What is that rate? Where do you know, how do you know what that rate is?
I don't have that rate, but it's not to exceed figure.
So they can't cumulatively charge us for more than the, this is all around contract principles, this is not going to screw up the thing, but what I'm getting at is they can't exceed the ceiling, but they can manage the cash flow however they want, because they're basically going to say, oh, we did this much. And so if I were running it and I had that kind of flexibility, I'd be honest, but I'd be, you know, as aggressively honest as I could be to make sure that the cash is coming through the door as fast as I can get it. It's a small contract, it's not a big deal if they did that anyway. From your standpoint, you should be, if it's a bigger contract especially, even if this is the standard thing, oh, we just tell you we'll bill you based on our hours, if you don't nail down their rate, then they might as well, might as well have said, we're going to bill you every month what we kind of think would be fair, and you're going to have to live with it.
But on the other side of that too, they could say, well, our rate's $120 an hour, and if we put 20 hours in, I'm going to charge you 22. So it's either, you know what I'm saying?
Well, no, because that would be fraud. So the issue is, right now, the way it's worded, they can just say, well, it's based on the hours, and, I don't know. That doesn't get you to a dollar number, that just gets you to a number that gets multiplied by some other number to get to what the number is they're charging. I understand, if you've worked with these four, or most of these, we've worked with a long time, you're confident, you can be honest. If they're honest, and I'm not suggesting they're not, I'm just saying, in a contract, when you have that kind of progress billing plan, and there's no actual objective that says, here's how we're going to calculate it, you have no, they can do what they want, because you don't have any means of checking their work. That's all, so enough said. Ready for motion? Okay, I move that we approve a contract for $38,390 for a water and sewer rate evaluation and M36 water audit from Capital Strategic Solutions.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
And last one, under the contract one, is a contract value $34,933 for recycling compactor from Maguire Equipment, Inc.
This is for our transfer station, we've requested that from Capital, they finally gave us the go-ahead to purchase that, and it's going to be a well-needed thing for the, especially during the holidays, and anytime during the year when we have some antiquated equipment that sometimes breaks down, so.
Is this getting a name to it, is this going to be?
It could get a name, but right now it doesn't have a name.
All right, that's good.
Hasn't been born yet.
2025. Any questions, Pete?
Is this to add another one to your supply, or to have one that works all the time?
So what we're going to be doing is, we'll have three active compactors. If one goes down, we'll still have two to supply, so it'll be three compactors to make sure that we don't have any lines going out to 27.
So today, there's two. Are you saying you're going to slide things over and you'll actually have three lined up?
We'll have availability for all three. They'll be permanent where they are, so we'll have access to all three.
So on Wednesdays, that means they'll actually have two out of them, two open instead of-
And if one, like I said, we've had breakdowns on at least one every year, and on a Saturday, when you got lines out the door, you have to wait for the vendor to come in to fix it for us, and having that flexibility, having, being able to shut down one for preventive maintenance and have the other ones available makes a big difference. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I was just curious as to why these doors were called doghouse. Do you know?
On the compactors?
Yeah, they seem, they use the word doghouse in two places, on each side of doghouse doors for loading.
A doghouse is usually used to cover something, so like a doghouse on the back of your house for, say, it's a, what do you call the?
Bulkhead.
Bulkheads, yes. So they would use a, they would build a structure to cover that area instead of having a bulkhead. They would call it a doghouse, so I'm assuming it's some kind of coverage on the compactor.
Okay.
I will correct this, you already know the one minor editorial change I had, but it's really the template that needs to get fixed.
It's changed.
It's changed. You changed on this? Is the template changed too?
I've changed it, yes.
Okay, then no more need be said.
Nope.
I'll borrow yours.
Okay, you ready?
Yep.
Okay, I move that we approve a contract for $34,933 for a recycling compactor from Maguire Equipment, Inc.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Well, thank you, that was a lot smoother than I thought it would be.
All right, thanks, Mo.
No, I'm kidding, thank you.
I just appreciate the help, Pete. This is good, we're building momentum.
You're not going to talk to us about ARPA?
No, that's me.
It's redirected to the left side of the table.
Thanks, Mo.
That's me.
All right, so ARPA discussion, request to vote 3,000 for Capital Strategic Solutions, ARPA Coordination, Treasury?
So, as you know, our ARPA money needs to be committed by December 31st of 2024. We have the ability to spend through 2026, but it has to be committed and/or under contract by 2024. We have been utilizing Capital Strategic Solutions to help us work with Norfolk County. They've been a little difficult in processing some of our projects, not just from Medfield, but many of the towns in Norfolk County have had similar issues. So we originally, I believe our original contract with Capital Strategies was $4,000, maybe, $5,000? Just in this last week, the amount of hours that we've had to utilize Capital Strategic, and Frank gave up his Thanksgiving holiday to try and get this done, because we got notification, I wasn't joking, on November 26th at 4:59 PM, that Norfolk County was changing the deadline to December 6th, and all of the projects had to be committed. Now, we were not obviously waiting until our December 17th meeting, and we had ARPA items on the agenda as well. However, there were some we were still waiting to commit. Parks and Recreation will not be able to do the fence, the remaining fence pieces with ARPA money. They were not able to get their fence quotes in time. So we've had to pivot over the last five days to take other items off the capital budget to utilize that money. So I am pleased to tell you, after everybody's hard work, that we are down to zero with the Treasury once the votes happen tonight and they're submitted. That's not to say the county isn't going to push back on some of those, but we have a fantastic Norfolk County board member in attendance who will fight the fight for us. I did let John Cronin know that we were a little upset that, you know, we found out. For those of us who might not have been in the office on Tuesday night, you would not have known until Monday morning today that your ARPA was due in five days, which I think is just unfair to all of us who are working under a December 31st deadline.
Yep, I'll just agree.
And to add a little background, because I'm not at all happy with this either. I'm on the board, one way or the other. I will, at the appropriate time with the appropriate people, let them know to an appropriate degree. The county, quite reasonably, is interested in pulling back ARPA funds that are available, allocated to the towns, if the towns fail to commit those funds before the end of the month. So that's an entirely reasonable position for the county to take if the towns can't get their act together. But when an email comes out just before Thanksgiving weekend, with the deadline right after Thanksgiving weekend, that's sneaky. That does not feel to me like a just, I understand what the argument could be, it's, well, because if you're not going to do it, then we need to have the time to put our plans together to get it committed by December 31st. So it's not, even that's not completely unreasonable, but sending an email out just before a long weekend with a very short, I have a very hard time not reading more into what's trying, what people are trying to do. And so, thanks Christine, Frank, and anyone else here in the town who scrambled to get this set of requests in so that we have our full request, and Christine's right. That still doesn't automatically mean that if something doesn't get derailed by the county.
Right, and we'll cross that right.
We do that if it happens, I'm hoping it won't. I think my sense has been that all along, we've been more organized and proactive about planning this stuff and putting requests in than some other towns. I'm surprised, but there's some other towns that back in the, nay, when the county was first talking about doing this, we're well behind. So, and fairness, for those in the public that are listening to my tirade, we, in other times, we've gotten help from the county on a number of things.
Absolutely.
So it's like, this is a particular play I'm not happy with. It's not like they're terrible people, they're not, but this just feels like a cheap play to me.
Yeah, I wasn't thrilled about it. So I don't know if you want to vote each of these independently, or if you want-
I'll read them off, then you can address it, then we can vote.
Yeah, I'm happy to give, I just told you about the, why we're increasing the Capital Strategies payment, but I can go through and describe all of these for you if you'd like.
Yeah, so I'll read them off, then you can address it, then we can vote. All right. Vote $56,357 for a LifePak device for the fire department in Norfolk County. Vote to increase rent utility assistance from $47,965 to $64,016, Norfolk County. We already talked about the vote to increase the purchase of MXU units from $105,000 to $119,830. Vote $20,000 for shared housing services agreement, Norfolk County. Vote $12,100, how do you say, Minotaur?
Minotaur, it should be.
Well, is it should be?
It's Minotaur, it's the name of the company.
I looked it up a few times, I'm like, I think that's what it is. Minotaur pagers for Call Fire Force, Norfolk County, and capital budget allocation for fiscal year 2024 and 2025, Treasury.
Yes, let me just give a brief explanation of each of them. So the $56,357 LifePak device, this is basically automated defibrillator, and this has been on Chief Carrico's wishlist for quite a long time. So this actually counts as Norfolk County.
Those aren't the ones that are around town already?
No, those are the AEDs, this is in the ambulance.
Okay.
Yeah, this is for the medics to operate. You previously approved $47,965 in the rent and utility assistance during the COVID-identified periods. I have to really give a shout out to Mia and Kathy McDonald at Outreach. They went back and went through every single record of payment or utility assistance over the last two years, and they found it was actually $64,000 paid out, and we are going to increase that, and that money will go back to the foundation for expenditure, which is, will then go back to the community, so a great use of our ARPA money, I believe. The MXU units, you already heard a briefing by Mo that I changed on him at the very last minute, because we had an extra $14,000, so MXUs it was. $20,000 is the shared housing services agreement. That is the agreement we have with the Town of Hopkinton, with several other towns. This has been incredibly beneficial, and I will tell you that when we first did this two years ago, and we used the ARPA money, Sarah and I talked about it, and I really wasn't sure it would be beneficial to us. I can't tell you the number of times I refer our 40B issues over to the Housing Services Group, and they take care of it immediately. The amount of increased communication to people who want to refinance or sell their home, like at Allendale, it's been tremendous. Where it would take me- You know, time to actually go back and do it because I don't do it every day. They get it done for them in such a short amount of time. So we're going to re up that for another year. The Minitor pages has also been on the list for Chief Carrico. And the last one.
Maybe just explain what those are. I don't know what those are.
Those are the the pagers for the Call Firefighters to let them know they have to come back to the station. And then the capital budget allocation for 24 and 25, and this is coming actually out of the Treasury money, not the Norfolk County. You had voted 350 for fiscal year 24 and 350 for fiscal year 25. What we're finding is because that amount of money has to be committed by contracts and or agreements, we need to have a little bit of flexibility. We might need 424 less than 25 because we're trying to make it all fit. So we're going to have no problem meeting that. But I just can't hold to the 350 and 24 and 350 and 25. I'd like to be able to use that total amount between those two years.
So so on that one in particular, should we call out the combined total of 700,000? Like that one doesn't have any, we're approving something with no dollar. Amount associated with it. I get I get the allocation.
Yeah, I I think as you had previously approved it, I would like a vote to allow us to allocate that 700,000 over fiscal year 23, 24 and 25 for any of those projects. Just in case we get to right before our December 17th meeting and we haven't been able to get a capital item. And I don't want to think anybody to think we're waiting to the last minute to do this. We, in order to get some of the vehicles that are in the capital budget, we've had supply chain issues. One of the trucks from Mo took over two years to get. So and that was in the 23 year capital budget. So because we actually have to have the contracts in place, that's what's been delaying us on this.
So are we authorizing the use of that fund for FY23 or is it simply it was an FY23 capital budget item that we're paying for in FY24?
No, I would like you to expand it because I think we can find if we've already bought an item in fiscal year 23, we would be allowed to reimburse ourselves.
Okay.
Through that. So I'd like to expand it to 23, 24 and 25, just to give us a little flexibility over this last couple of weeks.
And all we all we would do is specify total.
Total of 700,000.
700,000.
Previously approved.
And I'll put that in the motion that way.
Yep, all right.
All right. So I'm, we ready? Yes.
Yep.
Okay, I move that we approve the seven ARPA. Budget funding requests, $3,000 for Capital Strategic Solutions.
So before you go through them all, I'm going to recuse myself from the one that has to do with money for the that's going to go back to the Medfield Foundation. 24 year history with them.
Okay, so let me let me do A and I'll do A and B and then we'll do C and then I'll do the rest. Is that okay? So you can recuse yourself on C, Pete. The art, that's the Norfolk County.
I just wanted you to know so that you didn't get.
So let me do the first. I'll just do the first two. I move that we approve the allocation of $3,000 for Capital Strategic Solutions. For ARPA coordination. Funds to be taken from the Treasury. Give me the right words if I'm doing this wrong. And that we approve 56,357 for a life pack device for fire department funding to be taken from the Norfolk County allocation.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Okay, now this next one, Pete will recuse himself. I move that we vote to increase the rent utility assistance. From 47,965 to 64,016 to be funded from the Norfolk County ARPA allocation.
Second that.
I'll recuse myself.
Yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then C, E, F and G.
Second, then the next, the next four. Let me do, let me do the next three just to keep it easy. I move that we increase the purchase of MX units from 105,000 to 119,830. In support of the contract previously approved. Also that we allocate $20,000 for shared housing, for the shared housing services agreement. To funding to be taken from the Norfolk County ARPA allocation. And that we approve 12,100 for Minitor pagers for the Call Fire Force funds to come from the Norfolk County ARPA allocation.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And then finally. I move that we authorize the allocation of ARPA funds across fiscal years for items in fiscal years 2023, 2024. And 2025, funds to come from the Treasury with the total allocation across those years of 700,000, which was previously approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
So before we go on, I'd just like to thank you, Chris, for getting this done. Frank for giving up your Thanksgiving holiday to get it done. Appreciate it.
Huge.
At least it was a friend of yours who sent that one.
Yikes.
Tell your wife we appreciate it too, please.
All right, all right. So we did eight, so we're going to jump to nine. Bob Barella requests approval of a rent increase on affordable units at 67 to 71 North Street. I'll read them all off. First one is 671B lease expires 8/31/25. Increased rent from 2,200 to 2,250. Basically, it's a 2.2 increase. 711D lease expires 2/28/25. Increased rent from 2,395 to 2,450, looking at 2.3. 711E lease expires 5/31/25. Increased rent from 2,045 to 2,100, see 2.7. And the fourth request here is 713F lease expires 7/31/25. Increased rent from 2,200 to 2,250 at 2.3. And when I see those four and knowing that we had actually put a max at 5%, I see this as being very reasonable. Pete, any questions, comments?
Same reaction. I don't have any questions.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. I move that we approve the request for a rent increase on affordable units at 67 to 71 North Street. With unit 671B lease expiring on 8/31/25, increasing the rent from 2,200 to 2,250 a month. On 71 unit 1D, the lease expiring on 2/28/25, increasing the rent from 2,395 to 2,450. 71 unit 1E lease expires on 5/31/25, increasing the rent from 2,045 to 2,100. And 71 unit 3F lease expires 7/31/25, increasing the rent from 2,200 to 2,250.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent.
Okay.
All right, so no citizens comments to the best of our knowledge?
Nope.
Meeting minutes, I know you had 20, I think it was May 28th you sent out?
Yes.
We didn't list it on the, we didn't list it on the agenda, so.
Okay.
But.
But we can either look at it tonight or comment on the 17. I know I got my approvals into you.
You've got my comments.
Pete, May 28th, did you, I know it's not on there, but just curious, did you take a look at that?
Thank you.
I did, yeah. Well, I'm all up to date on minutes, so I assume those are the ones that I looked at.
Yep.
So you should carry it forward to the next agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so we'll look at that for next one, May 28th. And then a town administrator update?
I just wanted to remind everybody that there's a reception for Representative Denise Garlick on Monday, December 9.
Yep.
And just thank everyone for all their work on ARPA. All of the department heads have been working really hard over the last couple of weeks to try and get all of this done. So just thank you to all of my my staff and my people for working so hard on this project right around the holiday. I appreciate it.
Excellent.
I think the the reception for Representative Garlick is at the Needham Town Hall.
Correct.
And it's like 6:30 to 8:00 or something.
5:30. 5:30 to 8:00, I believe. I have it in my calendar.
6 to 8:30 is what I had, but.
Yeah, 5:30 to 8:00, yep. Only because I have it in my calendar, I put it in. Because she said to us on Sunday, I have, yeah, on Saturday. It's a big room. Let's make sure it's filled.
Unfortunately, I can't make it. I'm going to be on a business trip down to Jersey.
That, are you, that, you're good?
That's all I have for tonight. We'll have a formal, formal update on the 17.
Okay, excellent. And we, our next meeting date is December 17th and then we roll into 2025 with January 7th and January 21st, February 4th, February 18th. March 4th, March 18th, April 1st, April 15th, and we have a placeholder for April 29th. All right, select board reports. Pete?
What's the April 29th base hole?
Town meeting, before town meeting?
Oh, because town meetings, May.
Right, but you'd normally. Yeah, that would make sense to have it for the week before.
So I had individual meetings with Chief Garrett and Mo Goulet about various things and went to a Eagle Scout ceremony. On Sunday this past weekend for Brendan Popper and Marco Benson. And coming up is the Angel Run on Sunday. The parade, I guess, is, is that this weekend?
Yep. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all sorts of fun stuff.
Friday is the is the holiday stroll and the tree lighting. And then is the parade on Saturday then?
Yep.
Okay. And then the Medfield Foundation is having a meeting with its legacy fund grantees to report on Thursday. So that's always a very interesting time to hear what they're doing with the the small amounts, smaller amounts of money that the Medfield Foundation can afford to give them. And I've got office hours on Friday this coming week. If anybody wants to come and see me, I'm at the. Council on Aging Building, the center every first Friday of the month from 9 to 10. Open, open door policy. That's it.
Excellent.
I met with Steve Callahan on November 21st to just to go over the financial policy. So when I saw you at Blue Moon. I had already gone through, well, Steve had already gone through the wringer with me on his his financial policy documents. So he got my inputs on that. Went to Eagle Court, good Eagle Court on Saturday and only because I know Pete, you had, you talked to Anton about the hospital road property. I'm scheduled to talk with him 2 o'clock on this coming Friday.
Oh, good.
So. And on a personal note, I will announce to all of you that I have now joined the ranks of grandparents. My daughter-in-law had a baby boy on Sunday afternoon.
Congratulations.
So exciting. Details, name, weight?
The baby boy, seven pound, 13 ounces, name is Owen Gustaf Murby. Not named after me, named after my son.
Love that. That's awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks. We're looking forward to getting out there sooner or later. Yeah, oh, yeah. It's been pretty, it's been a pretty nice time.
And when are you getting out there?
I assume O W E, why, are there options? Because I'll.
So O R T spells it E O.
Oh, yeah.
Came back to not congratulations, but you spelled those.
I'll avoid Owen. I didn't realize you, just not paying attention. Yeah, yeah.
So I too actually met with Steve. You saw me there at Blue Moon. Great conversation. It was good because we also, a lot of things were kicked around. We were talking about just like what's going on with the town as we look at this financial plan and policies with. The school vote coming down, you know, hopefully we'll hear something, knock on wood, from the state in the next two, three, four days. And then knowing that we've got to deal with Parks and Rec and what's happening there. I too, with the the two of you, attended Saturday afternoon, Troop 89 Eagle Scout Honor Court for Brendan Popper and Marco Benson. Very nice turnout. It was Denise Garlick's last Eagle Scout ceremony here in Medfield after her 14 years of going to just about every one of them. So it was nice to see her there and she did. Remind us that she's a big room at the Needham Town Hall, though I told her I think it's going to be pretty packed. I think she's left a nice impression. And I think all three of us got a letter last time we were here from a Medfield resident, just giving us some feedback on the state hospital scenario with Medfield. With the dog walkers and the dogs. And it was very complimentary. Pete, he mentioned that you had sent him an email. I actually called them last week. We talked for probably half hour. Really nice guy. Very complimentary, just appreciated the the discussion that we've had. And then I did get, speaking of getting emails just before the the cutoff of the holiday. The Rose Bay memo for the 40B 30 day notice that came in. So that the clock has started ticking. I think Maria is looking into officially when that starts. Arbor Day, I meant to ask Mo, so tomorrow Arbor Day? Can I, why December? How is this working out? We're not doing this in like March or April? Well. Yeah. Oh, this is to earn our town thing? Is that why we have to, ah, okay, all right. That makes more sense. I was like, what? And then Affordable Housing Trust meeting next week, but unfortunately I'm going to be out of town, but I know that they'll. They'll just be following up on some open items regarding, certainly there are going to be questions on Rose Bay. And I know Mike Markucci got his, the same copy of the letter that I got. And then I think there should be a shout out to our Medfield High School Fall Sports Teams. We had state championship in girls volleyball. Girls field hockey and soccer went in deep to the the eights and to the final four. Boys soccer made it to the final four. Cross country had another strong season. Football team 35 nothing on Thanksgiving Day. That's always a good way to end the season. Hopefully I didn't miss a team, but I think all in, really good for the the high school. I love seeing all the different teams excel. So congratulations to them. And then as Pete mentioned, we've got the stroll Friday night. We've got the parade Saturday and then the Angel Run Sunday. So nice way to start to kick off the holiday season. And then that be that. All right.
And now you're going to vote.
But now we are going to go into executive session at the conclusion of this meeting. We are going to consider the purchase, or do I need to read the whole like why I'm going into or just read to consider the purchase exchange lease? Or value of real property, that the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Former Medfield State Hospital campus.
So it makes a, you need to so declare.
Say that one more time?
And I so declare.
Oh, and I so declare.
I move that we enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. As the chair has declared that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body regarding the former Medfield State Hospital campus.
And not resume an open session.
And not, thank you, and not resume an open session at the conclusion.
All right, all those in favor? Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye, aye.